Okay. Mr. Stenbridge?
Present.
Mr. Valencia?
Present.
Mr. Langham?
Present.
Ms. Bede Brazza?
Present.
Mr. Aiken?
Present.
Thank you. The floor is yours, Mr. Stenbridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Starting off with the 11:30 rediscussions. The first case is case BOA 1448246 with the address of 24 Common Street. Is the applicant and/or their representative present to explain?
Yes, we are. Thank you. So, okay, thank you. Scott Perry from 24 Common Street in Charlestown. We have proposed a curb cut for the back of our property, which backs up onto Elwood Street. We have, you know, received approval from the Public Works Department on 10/12/2022 from Ashley there, and Public Works is awaiting ISD approval as we understand it now. We're looking to add the curb cut in light of the fact that a lot of off-street parking in our neighborhood has been reduced over the last couple of years. We're also looking to add it so that we could have an EV charging station for ultimately having an electric vehicle in line with kind of a city's greener goals. And we feel, you know, the project will not change the kind of look and feel of the back patio that we have, which has tree canopy and currently has a fence, and we will maintain all of that existing structure. You know, we feel that there is, you know, but precedence here. Our neighbors two doors down have a similar curb cut, actually a larger curb cut that is also goes out onto Elwood Street. So we believe there is precedence there. And so that's kind of the quick backdrop to this. We've received opposition on a prior hearing related to comments that the street is the iceliest street in Charlestown. And I think my only rebuttal to that would be that, you know, the public works trucks are up and down the street on a weekly basis. Those that are opposed are bringing their cars up and down that street on a regular basis. So I believe that the street is no different than any other street in Charlestown or the city of Boston. Opposed to raise the issue that the headlights will inflect into the windows of those across. The headlights will be well below the windows of those apartments across the street. And then you'll also hear that this will create a ripple effect, and everybody on Elwood Street will want a parking spot when the reality is, is that any of the other properties do not have the appropriate space to do so. So just looking to bring this back to the board for approval. And again, we've received approval from the Public Works Department, and you have our plan here today. Thank you.
We've heard this a couple of times, at least some of us have. Can you remind us, there's a street light, I believe, near your proposed curb cut. What's your plan for that? Or what, yeah, what is your plan for that?
Right. We talked to the Public Works Department, Ashley there, and we have five feet of clearance between the proposed cut of 10 feet to that light post as marked on the plan here. So there is sufficient space such that if we wanted to widen the curb up to 12 feet, we could do so. But there is sufficient clearance according to the Public Works Department.
Okay. And just for my edification, you have not mentioned EV vehicles previous to this. Is this a new kind of request, or?
Correct. That's part of the motivation for us is ultimately having an electric vehicle, charging station, and having electric vehicle. We do not currently own an electric vehicle today.
Okay. Other questions from the board?
Yes, question. So at this moment, is there off-street parking? And the question is, I'm just thinking, you are creating one parking spot, but you are removing one off-street parking to create the driveway or not?
No. So there are no off-street parking spots on Elwood Street. So we'd be creating one net spot for Charlestown by, with the addition of this off-street parking. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing done. We'll take public testimony.
Can I make a, can I make a comment as a neighbor?
We're going to get to public testimony.
Okay.
Yes. Thank you. Okay. So with that, can I have public testimony? We'll start with the public officials or representatives. Sean?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Sean Breen with the MS Office of Neighborhood Services. An abboters meeting was held on June 13th at 6:00 PM to 24 Common Street. Since that time, this office has received four letters in support and eight letters in opposition. Those opposed, their main concerns are with privacy and safety, as alluded to by the applicant. With that, we withdraw our judgment to the board.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Katelyn Stapleton from Counselor Murphy's office. Our office has received letters from the community and neighbors in opposition to this project. The concerns are mostly based around privacy, safety, and maneuverability, and issues around snow removal. They believe that this will set a bad precedent if the curb cut is approved, and according to Plan Charlestown, creating new curb cuts should be avoided. Because of this, the council would like to go on record in opposition. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ashon Power from Counselor Colletta's office. And our office has not heard any support of this project, and the contrary, we've heard substantial opposition to it. Based on that, the council would like to go in opposition on this project. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Paul Solomon, City Council, Lash Michael Flaherty. Just based upon the opposition that our office has received, council to go in opposition.
Yep.
Bob? Yes, Madam Chair, and members of the board, Bob D'Amico, Boston Transportation Department. It's a little tight, but it does work. And luckily, there's no parking on either side. So from an operational standpoint, the plan does work. Thank you.
Thank you. Other raised hands?
Sorry. Yep, get Kathleen and then Melissa.
Hi, my name is Kathleen Lacy. I live at 11. Hi, I'm Kathleen Lacy. I'm opposed to this project. I live at 11 Elwood Street. I'm a direct neighbor right across the street. The bedroom on the, the biggest concern is the privacy. We believe the headlights would shine into a bedroom and a living room. That we don't have, we don't experience that right now, but with the nighttime and, you know, the headlights would shine into those bedrooms in the living room. Also, just the size of the street, it's pretty narrow to be back and in and out. It's just a safety concern. If there's ever an accident, I feel like the car would end up in our living room or our bedroom. So we are in opposition to this project.
Thank you.
Hi, Melissa Brennan from 8 Chestnut Street. I've spoken before. I've also spoken to the applicant. I never said that this was the ICAU street in Charlestown. So just to clarify, what we said as a concern was that 9 and 11 Elwood Street is a three-story building, and it casts a shadow on the street. Therefore, when it snows, we hardly get a plow down there, and it remains very icy because it gets very little sunlight. That was the concern. Where the other parking spot is further down Common Street, their yard is completely open to Common Street. Their parking is next to their home. Therefore, sunlight shines in that area. So that was the concern about ice. Secondly, I don't know what facts they use to say that the lights wouldn't shine in the bedroom, but I did extensively tell them that the building is lower grade there, and it goes up, and the other windows on the other side of the building are higher. So where this particular spot would be, there would be headlights into that space. And those are the concerns. And then, nobody mentioned, I know BTT's on the call, but this is a fire lane, and there are no parking signs on the street. And I don't know what evidence they have to say that the other neighbors would not then go and do this, because the house that's directly next to them was built at the same time. It's a duplex. They have the exact same space to do this parking spot, as well as the Dunavens who are at the end of Elwood Street have a much bigger space. So I think it would set a bad precedent. And again, Plan Charlestown says you should avoid curb cuts at all costs. Thank you very much.
No additional raised hands.
Is that Lauren with the raised hands?
Oh, Lauren, I'm sorry. This is on the panel with Sadi, you. Part of the.
Yes. Hi. I'm Lauren from 5 Elwood Street, and I am in favor of this. I'm, again, as a neighbor on Elwood Street, and I don't think any of the lights shining in windows would be any concern. There's already a decent amount of, you know, traffic that people who live on Elwood drive up and down to kind of unload and load up their car on their daily basis. So traffic is not an issue, or lights in cars. Well, I don't think you'll see any difference. And as well as, we've also had in a number of years, parking spots on the street taken away from us, particularly on the corner of Putnam and Common. So I think this is a rare situation where you can add a parking spot, so I think we should take advantage of it.
Thank you.
Sorry, have no additional ways to answer.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve. It's appropriate context to have, you know, small parking spaces on smaller streets like this. So motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second. Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Brazza?
I'm going to vote no due to counselor and abbotter opposition.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
The chair also votes no. The motion does not carry. Is there a second motion?
Motion to deny without prejudice.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Brazza?
No, because I'm not sure how they can improve on it to come back to the board to hear the case again.
Thank you. Mr. Aiken?
Also no for the same reasons as Ms. Bede Brazza.
I'm gonna vote no as well, so this motion also does not carry. Do we have another motion?
I like to put for a motion of denial.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
No.
Mr. Valencia?
No.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
No.
Okay. Well, none of our motions have carried. Pavier?
I think it has to go to a full board now, like defer, motion defer.
No.
No?
The board can defer if this is a full board. The board can make a motion to defer it, or I would suggest just to do a dismissal without prejudice and they can.
Deny without prejudice, correct?
Deny without prejudice. I apologize, sorry. So they can work with their neighbors at that point.
I'm going to put for a motion to defer, to allow for a little bit more adequate time to do additional outreach to the counselors and to the neighbors now that we've heard new information, such as the EV charging. Maybe there's a gate or a situation that can also address the concerns of floodlights going into the units.
Is there a second?
I would suggest a date for February 6, 2024, to give enough time.
Sorry.
Madam Chair?
Who's speaking?
Scott Perry.
Yes, sir.
Just to clarify, there would be a gate behind the parking spot, so if there's concern there about the lights, there will be a gate and a fence similar to what it is that would block any lights.
Thank you. Okay, sorry. Where am I? Am I, was there a second?
Motion to defer.
Okay, there was a second, right. Okay. Mr. Stenbridge?
Yep.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
The chair reluctantly votes yes. The motion carries. Next case.
We're skipping over the next two listed cases, and we're going on to case BOA 144717 with the address of 229 to 233 Bowden Street. The applicant and their representative is present?
Yes, Mr. Stenbridge.
Please proceed.
So good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Derek Small, of a business address of 51 Dobson Road. With me today is David Freed from Chu Architects and Associates. And today, we're here seeking relief to change the occupancy of the building from a laundry mat and dry cleaners to a laundry mat and six residential units by erecting a three-story addition. The zoning sub-district here is an LC, which is local convenience, and our lot size is approximately 5,600 square feet. Madam Chair, with regard to the violations, we're seeking relief today. We're seeking a conditional use permit, as the residential use in the LC is a conditional use. We're seeking relief for off-street parking, as we have none on site, as the property faces Bowden Street, which is a major thoroughfare in Dorchester, and is accessed by two major MBTA lines, which are the 15 to Rubbles and the 17 to Andrew. The FAR, the FAR requirement here is 1.0. We are proposing 2.3. And with regard to the building height, the building height requirement in the zoning sub-district is 40 feet, and our building is approximately 43 feet 9 inches. So we're approximately 3 feet 9 inches over the required height. With regard to the units themselves, they're three-bedroom units with two baths, and they range in size from 1,300 square feet to 1,400 square feet. The first floor, which is being shown, or ground floor level, will consist of the laundry mat, elevator, and entrance to the building itself. We are providing bike racks, and the trash will be stored in the basement. Go to the next slide, please. The units, we are proposing two units on each floor. As you can see in the diagram, unit 201 is approximately 1,400 square feet. Unit 202 is approximately 1,300 square feet. And again, three beds, two baths. If you go, or if you scroll down, we can talk about the height. All of the units are pretty much uniform on all three floors. With regard to the building height, again, we are proposing 43.9, which is common for the, for the sub-district. If you scroll down, we have pictures of buildings on the same block that are approximately four and five stories tall. That being one, if you scroll down more recently, these were approved, moved to Dorchester Food Co-op, which is on the same block, which also goes up four stories, was approved less than a year ago. And so the height requirement, or the height that we are proposing, is not at all uncommon for the district. We can stop there, Madam Chair. We can answer any questions that the board might have.
Thank you, Mr. Small. Questions from the board?
Yeah, so in terms of, excuse me, reading the BPDA recommendation, they just cited if there's any way to lower the building by, I guess, 3 foot 9, that you wouldn't necessarily need a variance for height. What's, what's your floor to ceiling, you know, on the ground floor, and then at each of the top three stories?
If we can scroll back, David Freed, I don't know if he's been upgraded to a panelist, but I think the.
Yes, I'm here.
Basement level. Okay, David, you might want to answer that.
So, hi, my name is David Freed. I'm an architect at Chu and Company. And the existing condition is that the first floor has a very tall ceiling height, and from the slab to the top of the roof, it's 14 feet.
Okay. So that's what's throwing the additional three feet?
Yes. Yeah. And we wanted to keep the height to enable, you know, flexibility for whatever commercial space goes into the other, the other unit.
Great. No further questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I got one. I just want to know, is it, excuse me, I got a call. Is it any handicap units in this building that's available?
Yeah. All these units are designed to be group one, and each floor has elevator access. Yes.
Thank you. With that, may I have public testimony?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Ashley Bones. My office is Neighborhood Services. Our office did hold an abboters meeting for 229 to 223 Bowden Street back in May. The project did present to meeting House Hill twice, Bowden, Geneva Main Streets, and the Greater Bowden Geneva Neighborhood Association, but they did gain the support of Main Streets. Greater Bowden Geneva did show their opposition with, due to the density that they thought could be less. With that, we defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Io, representing the Office of City Counselor, Brian Worrell. In regards to this project, as was stated, they did have support from Greater Bowden, Geneva, as well as the Main Streets and the Cambridge Union Association. And with that, the council would also like to follow suit in support.
Thank you.
One second, just want to make sure I got all the raised hands. I think that's everyone. Yep, we're all still, have no additional raised hands.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? With that, may I have a motion?
Chair, I'd like to put for a motion of approval with BPDA Design Review on exterior.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Brazza?
Yes.
Yes.
Here also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Have a good day.
Next, we have case BOA 1443137 with the address of 43 to 45 Stanton Street. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Yes. Good afternoon.
Madam Chair, please remember, I'll reuse myself and step back from this. Thank you.
Thank you. So just a note, we are now a five-member board.
Understood. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mark LaCass, LaCass Law, 75 Arlington Street in Boston, legal counsel to the owner and project proponent, who is with us, Ricky Beliveau from Volney Capital. And also on the hearing is Eric Zachrisson from Context, our architect. That's not the right presentation that's on the screen. If we could have Stanton Street in the plans, that would be great. But Madam Chair, members of the board, this building that is before you today is the convent parish house of the St. Matthew Church, which was closed by the Archdiocese in October of 2020, and the building has been vacant since then. It is part of a larger church campus, but the other component parcels of the church campus, namely the large, much larger church building, are not part of this presentation. This building is what was, as I said, the convent parish house, and that is the subject of the proposal. Do we have the plans, please? If we could start with that, that first, the first page of the, yes. So there's been much community process, and we have responded to the old BPDA recommendation, which was based on the original submission. And between myself and Eric Zachrisson, the architect, will explain to you all of the changes that have been made. But the revised plans were submitted and reviewed by the examiner, and an updated refusal letter was issued on November 6, and that is what is before you today. As a result of the process, we reduced the parking to 16 spaces with one handicap space to eliminate a prior building code refusal letter that had been issued. We reduced the size of one of the units to accommodate that, from three bedrooms to two bedrooms. And responsive to one of the BPDA recommendations, we added hip roof to the rear addition behind the existing structure to be more sympathetic with the existing structure and with the much larger church next door, which you will see on elevation. So as a result of those changes, no new zoning violations are created, but for the height violation was increased by about four feet as a result of the hip roof. But the structure of the building itself and that portion which houses the residential units did not change in height. Next slide, please. So this is the existing site plan. The little wing building that you see there on the right-hand side of the site plan is what is, what was a chapel that will be converted into residential space, as will the remainder of the existing convent building. The existing site has asphalt parking across the entire front of the building with parking spaces. We're going to eliminate that, restore. We're going to eliminate that, restore the front yard to its original condition. This was, this parish complex was constructed in 1899. We searched the historic records and found some great photographs of the front yard as it previously existed. So we're doing a complete restoration of the front yard to green space and planting trees and pulling all the parking to the back of the building under the proposed addition, as again you'll see on elevation. Next slide, please. So this is the proposed site plan, which shows restoration of the front yard as not parking. And there's a better plan that will show you some of the proposals for that. All of the parking is being pulled around to the back, you can see, and behind the chapel extension there on the side. And importantly, again, as part of our research from Mass Historical Society, the, you know, the goal of this project has always been preservation and restoration of the existing building, even though this is not a historic district and even though it could be subject to demolition. And in fact, some in the neighborhood even suggested that. My client's goal has always been to preserve this very beautiful brick building as an institutional neighborhood asset. Next slide. And next slide is the proposed site plan. So Stanton Street is a slightly different orientation here. Stanton Street is on the right-hand side of the screen, which is the front of the building. You can see the front yard is being restored to green space, walkways to the front entrance, planting of trees, and the existing building is being preserved. With the addition, there are 14 units that are being proposed. Two of those will be IDP units and 16 parking spaces, including the 1 HP space, which is shown there as space number 12. And that eliminated our building code refusal from the prior submission. Next slide. And skip ahead a couple. These are just demolition. Yeah, right here is good. So the, I'll turn it over to Eric Zacherson to talk about the floor plans and the programming of the existing building and the new building. But I did want to highlight, and Eric can talk about, that the BPDA recommendation, based on the prior plans, contained very specific suggestions, and we've incorporated literally 100% of those recommendations into the revisions. Historic preservation was recommended. That is indeed the primary goal of this project. Restoration of the green front yard, removal of parking, we've done that. Design should match the character and context of the building, including materiality. And with the addition of the hip roof, you'll see on elevation that that has been achieved. The hip roof was added to be consistent with the convent and the much larger, taller church building next door. The parking is now within the BTD recommended range of 14 to 21 spaces, at 16 with the 1 HP space. Alignment of window finistration was recommended, and you'll see on elevation that that has now been achieved. A bike room has been added with 16 parking, 16 bicycle parking spaces. And continuing design review was suggested, given the size of the proposed addition, we're certainly amenable as that, amenable to that as a proviso. So with that, I'll turn it over to Eric Zacherson and to talk about the floor plans of the 14 units, 12 of which are two bedrooms, one one-bedroom and one three-bedroom, again, two IDP units. And Eric can talk about the elevations and the design considerations that he brought to bear responsive to both the community feedback that we got and to the BPDA prior recommendation. So Eric.
Thank you, Mark. Do you mind scrolling back one slide so we can show the ground floor? So on the right side of this drawing is Stanton Street. One of the main things we want to do is keep, preserve the windows and actually preserve and use the doors that were previously existing. So on the right side of the drawing, you see the existing staircase and the existing primary entrance, which we are going to continue to use as a primary entrance. That'll be the entrance for the lobby. And you see the lobby kind of snake through the building to connect to the new staircase that we're adding. You see to the south of that is the chapel space, and we've designed a unit especially to preserve that, to use as much of the existing windows as possible. So you have a two-bed unit on the lower right portion of the plan and a two-bed unit on the upper left portion of the plan. One of, as Mark said, one of the early comments was to convert, to take that unit down from being three-bed to two-bed in order to incorporate the bike parking space that you see in the upper right, adjacent to the lobby. There is an existing double door, and we're going to use that as the primary, as the entrance for the bike parking and have that connect directly into the lobby, which you see kind of in the middle of the page. Around the back of the building, you see the 13 parking spaces as they remain. And all of the space to the right between the existing building and the sidewalk will be converted back to green space as it was historically, but has been surface parking for the recent history. Next slide. And so the footprint of that, other than the staircase, is the same as the existing footprint. On this level, on level two, we are carefully adding space at the back of the property, so over the surface parking lot in the rear, and preserving the elevation that you see across the top of the page, the elevation you see on the right side of the page, which is basically Stanton Street, and the shape of the roof on those two faces. And then at the rear of the property, we elevate three units over the sidewalk, over the surface parking. So on this level, you have five units, two of them in the existing building in the left in the darker, the darker hatch zone, which are two bedrooms and the one-bedroom. And those are new construction, basically adjacent and behind the building in order to kind of really preserve and allow the building to continue to shine at the existing building. Next slide. And this is the pattern as we go up. The lower right, the space above the chapel, becomes a roof zone. On the upper right, we have a kind of large deep zone. So that is our 1-3 bedroom unit. It's over 2,200 square feet, so it's quite a large unit for the, within the renovation. But given the configuration, the walls, which you see is kind of the light walls on the right and on the top, those are all to remain, and the window openings are to remain. So it gave us kind of a large unit, and we're making the most of it with that a large open living kitchen dining area and three bedrooms. On the left side of this, you see the three new construction units. Again, these are elevated above the surface parking. They're kind of designed to be, as, recede behind the existing building as much as possible. Next slide. And on this one, you see at the fourth level, we only have the addition where kind of above the roof and would have allowed or maintained the existing hip roof for both the kind of two-story chapel and three-story portion of the building. Next slide. We can kind of see this. So we see on the left side here, the higher roof, the upper right, the third level roof, and the lower right, the second level roof. Next slide. It becomes a little bit clearer once we look into the elevations. Next slide. So the hatch, the hatch zone here is the existing basements, three and two-story building. You see the chapel on the left and the vocal building right. Recess behind that is our four-story building. And as we mentioned, the, in the earlier iterations, which we had thought about trying to keep the building much shorter, but the BPDA recommendation was to add this hip roof across the top of it in order to echo and complement the existing structure. So we've added that roof across the top. And though the windows of the new building, which you see on the third and fourth floor here, don't really, aren't in the same plane with the rest of the building. There was a request that we align them. And so we were able to do that and reconfigure the units inside so that the windows on this face, when it's presented in two dimensions, like this, really align up and down as you kind of step back from the existing building to the new building. Next slide. Yeah, so the existing, or the proposed side elevation, you can see how the four-story volume on the right sits over the parking. And the main elevation of that taller portion of the building is going to be preserved or stored and maintained in its configuration. The double door there you see would be leading to the bike parking area. Next slide. And so this is the rear elevation. And you can see this is where you really see our addition. But even at the first floor, you're going to see a lot of the existing construction kind of looking through the parking zone. Next slide. And then this is the driveway side. So on the right side of the drawing, you have Stanton Street. You're looking kind of across the driveway. You see the chapel and the four-story volume, but you, or three-story volume with the existing hip roof and the four-story volume on the left, where the first story is surface parking and then three levels of units above that. And then the hip roof above that, that was proposed by the BPDA. Next slide. And sectionally, to help kind of describe it, there is an existing basement space. We're not putting any living space in there. It'll be used for building systems. Then above that, you see three levels of existing, and they exist in ceiling and attic. On the right side, you see the stair and then the surface parking and three levels above that with that. Next slide. And this is the question from the beginning, and we wanted to respect it, is how does it compare to the existing church next door, which is very tall? So you can see the existing church, the existing building that we're attaching to and expanding, and then our building, and we're still just barely above, even with the new hip roof, we're still barely above the cornice line that is at the top, near the top of that existing building. Next slide. Or that possibly the last one. And then these are just existing plans for reference, including them.
And just, Madam Chair, if I might, on the question of feasibility and why this project has been proposed as 14 units with the four-story addition in the back, I probably worked on about a half dozen or so religious institution buildings being converted to residential use. And the same issue always arises, and that is the sheer cost of conversion of the historic structure that was part of a religious institution into residential dwelling units. So again, with the historic preservation of the existing building being my client's primary goal, lots of care and consideration has been giving, given to making this project feasible. And at 14, we achieved the feasibility. And also at 14, we achieved the two IDP units. And we think that all of the other design changes responsive to the BPDA recommendations are all considerations that make this a fantastic project. And for your consideration, thank you so much.
Thank you. A couple of questions for me. It appears from the BPDA comment that you're just 26 square feet shy of a small project review. And so I guess what's the-
Yes, I'm happy to address that. You know, thresholds are thresholds. It's not, it's not fun. And as you know, small project review is largely design review based. It is largely a design review function. And as indicated, we consent to and welcome a proviso for continuing BPDA Design Review to accomplish those very same purposes.
Thank you. And just a question on the parking. So you mentioned a reduction from 19 to 16, and it looks like their feedback was a reduction from the 16 to something else. So I just, can I, can you just comment on that?
Yeah, I believe the BPDA's recommendation said, following BTD guideline, parking spaces should remain between 14 and 21. So at 16, with one being the HP space, I think we're right within the BTD guidance range.
Okay, other questions from the board?
Are your accessible units on the ground floor? And is there one or two on a ground floor?
Third, MAB standards, we don't, we do not have currently an accessible unit. This is an existing building being reconfigured for residential use, and so is exempt from Group 1 standards. And having less than 20 units, it's exempt from Group 2 standards. So while we're trying to make the first floor units accessible, we would have to add a lift outside the building because of the elevated nature of the first floor. So at the moment, neither of the first floor units are the group one accessible simply because there is no route from outside to inside this building without adding a lift for a reasonable reason.
And so are your IDP units, where are they on the floor?
That determination has not been made yet. We have to submit to the approved plans to the BPDA, which of course would also be a proviso of any decision here, that the IDP units be approved by the BPDA. And there'd be a separate agreement with the BPDA Affordable Housing Agreement. Oh, and by the way, these are home ownership units. This is an opportunity for home ownership in this neighborhood, which was a big, there'd be a separate agreement with the BPDA. And during that process, we would submit to the IDP staff at the BPDA, and they would guide us in determining which of the two units would be appropriate.
Okay, great, thank you.
One additional comment on the owner of the property. I think it would be great to make an accommodation for a lift to be able to, in the future, have those two units be accessible. So I'm open to us adding that into the plan as something that we're building to accommodate.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, can I have public testimonies?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Ross Cochrane with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The proponents for this project have completed their community process. Our office held a Butters meeting in March of this year, where nine Butters were in attendance. They've also met with the local civic association. And at this time, I've got on file from my records and the ZBA a layer of opposition from that local civic association. At this time, we'd like to defer to the board's judgment, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a few raised hands. I'll start with Alice and then go to Jackie.
Jessica, we had Ayo from Counselor Worrell's office.
Okay. I see someone from Counselor Worrell's office.
Okay, go ahead. I didn't see a hand raised.
No worries. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Ayo Emide Omuwo from the Office of City Councilor, Brian Worrell. In regards to the project, the councilor just wanted to offer his support for it.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Councilor, Michael Flaherty. If you feel ready to give your support.
Okay. Any other elected officials' office? Okay, so we'll go to public testimony. Alice, there's a few raised hands. We just want to try to get to everyone. If you could briefly tell us if you're in support or opposition and give your name and address.
Am I, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Alice Nelson. I live on the corner of Norfolk and Stan Street, 217 Norfolk Street. In opposition to the addition here, we're particularly in opposition to the height, the very imposing height. And though the developer has said it matches up with the height of the church, there's a whole nother development that we're looking at and talking with Codman Square Neighborhood Development Corporation, who's in the process of buying the rest of the church lots. They're talking about developing 77 units of affordable housing and rental, affordable rental units. So that, for the community, we're looking at two projects, not just this one. So this is market rate, this is 14 market rate units. And my children can't afford to live in those market rate units. It's right in a small neighborhood. Stanton Street is a one-way street with single-family and two-family homes with small yards going all the way down. This proposal towers over the Stanton Street, but it also towers over Euford Street, which is behind. And there's new developments of two-family homes behind this. And this four-story situation presses back halfway into the parking lot and then raises up to a four-story height. It's a walk-up. So it's a four-story walk-up. Also, the driveway on the left, which was never accentuated by the presentation, where that room goes out to the left, and the driveway's to the left, that driveway is very narrow. that room goes out to the left, and the driveway's to the left, that driveway is very narrow. I want to say nine feet. I tried to see what the number was on their drawing. I'm not sure, but if you drive your car down there, which we have, and you try to turn around in the back there, the back of your car is basically hanging over the wall that goes into the people on Euford Street's backyards to make that turn, that S around. That's a concern. Let me see.
Please wrap it up. I think there are other people who want to comment. Thank you.
So we're, as a community, we're for three floors, 11 units, with two being affordable units. But this, in our opinion, this is all in the benefit of the developer. It really doesn't benefit our community to take so much density and put it in a small space.
Thank you.
And also Brian Warrell's office, we tried to get in touch with him, and he never responded to us. So I'm surprised he's against this. He never spoke with us directly as a community.
Okay, Jessica, please.
Lady? Lady Rockwood?
Nadie.
I'm sorry.
Hi, everyone. My name is Nadie Rockwood. I am one of, as one of, I am a homeowner of 69 Stanton Street, and we oppose to the project as a whole. Stanton Street is a very small residential street. It's comprised of two and three families. The density, the height of the project, this would also increase traffic, and we have some parking concerns. It's a one-way street. So it just doesn't fit the dynamic of the street. It bothers the people who live right next door. I mean, with the size and the height of this building, there would be so much lack of sunlight and all of these other concerns. So I oppose.
Christina?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, how are you? This is Christina Parent. I am speaking on behalf of 42 Stanton Street and 63 Stanton Street. 42 Stanton Street is directly across the street. That is my grandfather's house, and 63 Stanton Street is my parents' house. So parents live on the street for over 55 years at this moment. We've been living on the street for a long time. Just wanted to give some background on, I used to go, was a student at St. Matthew's, so that entire project and the history and neighborhood is very, very important to me. I'm a part of Rock. Rock sent a letter of opposition. As of neighbors, we are opposed to the density on the small block. We are opposed to adding the fourth floor, especially adding the fourth floor, because if we are thinking about the, I call, we call it growing up, the parking lot. So you think about the parking lot, I am two houses down, and Beaver, who was in the butter, direct a butter, is the yellow and white house directly next to it. It would be surpassing the height of my home. And the only tall building is the other builders, developers that we're, that are also we're looking at and to that are coming in to do more work on the block, and it's going to be a lot of work. We can agree to three floors, 11 units, market rate, homeownership, and two affordable homeownership. Over 30 opposition petitions have been sent out to the zoning board, and many have also sent in opposition emails. This is something I think we need to regroup to just, as a community, because this is not benefiting us, this is only benefiting the developers. We can go back to the drawing board and see what we can come up with, but at the moment, I think we do not want to move forward with any of this work due to the history and the specific space. And Rock, also, this was a place that Rock used to meet, and the fact that we didn't have the opportunity to even be able to make it something ours for so long, all the time happening in Dorchester, like we've been saying throughout these meetings, that people want to come in and develop and develop and develop and not thinking about the communities. Although there are homes, the homes are good for the communities, we need to respect communities that are coming in, that these people are coming into. So if you want to come in to the community and make it better, respect ours too.
Thank you, ma'am. Please wrap up. Thank you.
I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris?
Hi, this is Chris Prul. I'm at 23 Thelma Road. I'm calling in support of the developer. I think they've done a good job of repurposing an existing building instead of tearing it down, trying to build something new. It also brings more units to the city when it's a vacant building right now and not being used. So just want to give my support.
Thank you.
Thanks. And Mark?
Ms. Marks, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Mark Sabatik, I'm a Dorchester resident, 26 Hillsborough Street. I'd like to voice my support for the project. I really do like the adaptive reuse nature of the project. I think it's a fantastic way to provide more housing. I also like that we've eliminated the parking in the front yard. And just finally, I think this is a very thoughtful proposal that's put forth that'll provide a lot of new housing to, you know, what is an existing vacant building. So I appreciate your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Jackie McGee. I'm a resident on Quonset Ave in Dorchester, and I am in support of this project. I believe the developer has done a fantastic job in designing a project that maintains the current historic look and the feel of the old parish, but while also addressing a need for additional housing that we have in the area. Unfortunately, we have to go upper out in a lot of instances, and I do believe that the plan that they made accomplished that. Additionally, I appreciate the plans to replace the hardscaping in the front of the property and the thought and effort that was taken to restore it to green space.
Thank you.
I have no additional raised hands.
Any additional questions from the board?
Yes, I do. I just want one more kind of clarification on the, and if you can pull up the first, the parking plan, that would be great. You have an accessible space at the rear, and it seems like you have access to Unit One. I don't see any stairs along that corridor. Is that correct? That if I was using that accessible parking space at the rear, I can get to Unit One through, you know, with a wheelchair?
Eric, can you answer that without reference to the plan on the screen?
Yeah. So there would be a couple of different ways you could get into Unit One. So, but reality is, currently, you could come, if the rear stair is used as an access, you would be able to come in with a wheelchair and come into the back.
Right, okay. You did, you did answer my question, then. It's, it would be, you know, the inconvenience of it is that you would have to go through your second means of egress to access the common hallway. But when you're in a common hallway, do you only have access to Unit One? Because it looks like there's a barrier going to Unit Two, like there's a stairway. Am I reading that plan correct?
Correct. And that has to do with the elevation change going...
Exactly. Okay, so theoretically, you do have a level floor, which is only Unit One that can be accessible. I mean, my only comment is, you know, it just does not make sense to provide an accessible handicap parking space, and none of the units have been designed to be accessible, you know, for at least one. So I just wanted to make that as a general comment. But no further questions.
Yep, but we did so because the lack of a handicap parking space initially drew a building code refusal. So rather than seeking relief for building code refusal, we incorporated the HP space into the plan.
Right, but you understand...
I understand, yeah.
The theory here, you have an accessible, and you're saying, no, the building's not accessible, so...
But my client did indicate during the hearing that he'd be amenable to adding a lift to accommodate that issue.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Okay. Hearing none, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put for a motion of approval with a proviso that it undergoes BPDA design review to, to work with the idea to allow for an accessible unit on the ground floor, and to also just look a little bit, to look at the diverse geometry as it relates to building height.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Brazza?
Yes.
The chair votes no. I think there's more work to be done with neighbors. The motion does not carry. Is there a second motion?
Looking for denial without prejudice?
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Brazza?
No.
The chair votes yes, the motion does not carry.
Ma'am Chair, it's obvious. I recommend just to defer this.
I would too.
January 23rd, 2024. That'll give the applicant opportunity.
Can I have a motion?
Motion to defer until January 23rd, 2024.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Brazza?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. See you then.
See you then. Thank you so much.
Next, we have case BOA 1463517 with the address of 32 and 34 Lock Street. Is the applicant and/or their representative present to explain?
Do we have any raised hands for this?
All of them.
I have a raised...
Yes, please move on then.
Next, we have case BOA 1496081 with the address of 1295 to 1297 River Street. This is a cannabis case. Is the applicant and/or their representative present to explain?
Yes, I'm present. I'm the applicant, Janice Israel.
Please proceed.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Great. Would you like me to share my screen?
You're not able to share. Please proceed with the, what you said.
Okay, great. Well, this is for the cannabis business proposal at 129597 River Street. This is for manufacturing, retail, and delivery at this location. And the, I'm here to ask for relief from the zoning board for two proposed violations. The first one is 500 feet of a school. I have submitted the survey from Fussin O'Neill Verified Surveyors that if we take into account the impossible barriers, which is the method of measurement for this type of business, it actually does come up of 624 square feet and not just under the 500 feet, which does come up currently on record as it does not take into account impossible barriers, and it goes directly through the post office. So if you do true walking distance and take into account impossible barriers, as you can see from the proposed submission of the Fussin O'Neill Verified Survey, it actually comes up as 624 square feet. The second violation being too close to another cannabis business. The requirement is 2,640 square feet, equal half a mile. This is coming up as 2,504 square feet away. So it's a little over 100 square feet shy of that requirement, and so I would like to ask for relief for that since the current business, as I mentioned, is retail, manufacturing, and delivery. And 48 Walter Street, which is 2,504 square feet away, the other cannabis business, is actually cultivation. So not only are these businesses very different, but they're actually complementary businesses that could work together and really bring some positive impact in economic development for Hyde Park by working together and having these two types of businesses there. The area is coming up as neighborhood, NS, I believe, neighborhood mall area. So it's in line with the other businesses as being, you know, for retail. Is there any questions from the board?
Okay, any questions from the board?
Yes, I got one question. I know that street's a pretty busy street. How's the parking, how's the parking going to be on that street?
Yes, so the parking actually is the next street over. There are 221 parking spaces that are open to the public, and that would be the parking. There are some dedicated parking spaces behind the lot that could be for employees. But as far as for the public, there is, it's less than 250 feet walking. If you know, the area is basically behind the post office, and you know, you could walk straight across the bridge to get there in less than 250 feet. And all this is proposed for when the bridge opens. For all of us in the area know of the difficulties with the current bridge being closed, the business is proposed to open when the, after the bridge opens. So the parking, you can change the slide where you can see the actual parking area and the distance. Sorry, I don't know what slide number it is, but...
It looks like you only have one slide here.
Oh, okay.
I got one more question. How is this security going to be around here? What kind of system are you guys going to have?
What type of security system?
Yes.
So the entire building will be extremely secure. There are multiple points where there needs to be cameras inside and outside. And I apologize if that's not submitted, but I do have, you know, actually a floor plan that has the specific areas where the cameras would be. I may have held it back for security purposes to not have it in a public forum, but I do have exact areas where all the security systems is. So this is actually something that's regulated by not only Boston Cannabis Board, but this is regulated by the state. So there are very specific requirements on how much cameras, surveillance, lighting that needs to be in the area. And so it's actually, it's a lot. I could share it with you, you know, if we wanted to do it off camera. But yeah, it's a lot of security. And then it's also, if you know the area, again, this is right next to the police station as well. So it's going to be a highly, highly secure project proposed here.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. And this is all real-time cameras with, that will be shared with the police fire, and this shared with the Massachusetts Cannabis Commission. So they're real-time cameras that, you know, that anytime they could, you know, look in or I needed to let them know, alert them of something, they would have real-time feeds to these cameras.
Is this on the second floor?
No, it's actually on the lower level.
Okay, because I'm looking at the building in front of me, and it looks like there's a central kind of entry, you know. Currently, the sign says Driving Academy Wick. And I'm trying to locate, you know, that main entry point on River to this plan.
Yeah, so I apologize if all the plans are not here. I'm not sure how that happened. But if you're looking at the building, if you look at, there's, there's three entries into the building. There's one that's straight ahead, there's one that's to the right, and there's one that's to the left. So this would be the entry to the left, and it is a somewhat semi-shared entry, but the portion that will be for the retail will be extremely secure and off, you know, to the side of that.
How are you handling deliveries and pickups since I'm not clear where, where there's like a drop off or loading or anything?
I'm trying to see if it shows that on here. It may not show that completely. So there is a back door that would be dedicated, there's three points of entry into this space here. So there is going to be a backside door that's going to be dedicated completely to the deliveries. So it's going to be completely to the delivery of the product for the store and also for the deliveries, for the delivery business. And so it's a, it's a completely separate dedicated door. It's actually a shared driveway with the police station as well. And so that sort of deliveries will be located in this. Of course, will be cameras as well. And so that sort of deliveries will be located in this. Of course, will be cameras as well.
Thank you. Other questions from the board?
Yeah, is this an equity applicant?
Yes, yes, I am. I'm certified Boston Equity and Certified Social Equity. And yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, can we take public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board. ONS held a community meeting. There were concerns raised by some of Butters about proximity of four to five schools in the area, including, as the applicant mentioned, the refusal letter mentioning that there's, they're within five hundred feet of an existing school. There was also other residents that were on that expressed support for the proposal, citing the opportunity to bring in a minority-owned business that already has worked in other parts of the city and could bring jobs and other resources to Hyde Park. There were some inquiries regarding the ADA accessibility and whether the same experience is offered to all persons wanting an elevator in the dispensary. The Bellnell Family Neighborhood Association, the Hyde Park Neighborhood Association, were present at that meeting and had some conversations with the applicant regarding community benefits. Ultimately, um, our office received three letters of opposition. One from the Reedville-Watch Neighborhood Association, I believe, and the other one from the, I'm sorry if I'm gonna mispronounce this, the RRR, the Roseberry-Rusclendale Road Neighborhood Association. So three in all, and then one in support for this proposal. And as I mentioned before, there was a few residents that expressed support in the community meeting. With that, we'll defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Newman, of those letters of opposition, which is like considered sort of the closest neighborhood group? Or are they all overlapping?
That's, that's a great question. I would not be able to answer that, I'm afraid, Madam Chair. I was on the liaison that facilitated the process.
Okay, no worries. Okay.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jordan Frey is here from Boston City Council's Ricardo Royo's office. We'd like to go back and support this proponent. Thank you.
Other elected official offices, please. We have one raised hand so far. Kizzy, can you state your name and address and tell us if you are in support or opposition?
Yes, my name is Kizzy T. I am a Hyde Park resident. And I'm just coming in just to say that I support this project. I've been in Hyde Park for maybe about seven years. I've seen other cities thrive when cannabis business come in. I would like to see Hyde Park have this one. Also, it's black-owned, women-owned too. So I am definitely supporting this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Demaryius?
Thank you.
Demaryius, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Demaryius Apontin. And I am a social equity participant for the Cannabis Control Commission and also a social equity for the law enforcement control. And I am in support of this platform business in Hyde Park. Thank you.
Thanks. No additional raised hands, thanks. Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with two provisos. One is that it has BPDAD's on review on exterior changes of any or on signage. And the second would be for the applicant to submit a site plan, that we just have plans to understand the location on file.
There's a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Bedabrazza?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you so much. Thank you all. Have a good day.
We will return and ask again about case BOA one-four-six-three-five-one-seven, with the address of thirty-two to thirty-four Lock Street. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Can you raise your hand if you're on to this proposal? Edward Tyrone? I don't see any raised hands, Madam Chair.
Okay. Madam Chair, Madam Chair, I recommend we to deny without prejudice if the board feels compelled or to defer to a later date.
Uh, can I have a motion?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Bedabrazza?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. Please reach out to the applicant.
Yeah, for the, for the record, it'll be January ninth, twenty-twenty-four for the deferred date.
Thank you.
With that, we will move on to the hearing scheduled for one P M. First, we have case BOA. I will ask if you are any withdrawal or deferrals from this time, time, turn.
Yes, Mr. Secretary, thirty-three Pearl Street?
That would be case BOA one-four-five-one-five-eight-eight, with the address of thirty-three Pearl Street. Would you please explain to the board?
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Matt Echol with Fletcher Tilton with the business address of one-hundred Franklin Street. Upon a resubmission and re-review, an additional violation was cited by ISD, which had to be re-advertised. I believe it has already been re-advertised for the December fifth hearing. So at this point, we're seeking a deferral to that time.
Okay, may I have a motion?
Motion to defer until December, December fifth?
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Bedabrazza?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. See you then.
Thank you very much.
If there are no further requests, then we'll move on to case BOA one-five-two-three-two-two-nine, with the address of forty-four to forty-six Winter Street. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Do we have a raised hand here? One second. Mike? I sent a request to unmute. Are you here for this proposal? Yep. Okay, I just made you a panelist, so when you switch over and you unmute yourself, you're gonna speak on this proposal?
Hello, can you hear me? This is Mike Corey for the applicant.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Mike Corey, Madoff &amp; Corey, a law firm in Foxborough. We're here for the applicant forty-four, Nokem Forty-four, Inc. And we're seeking to, uh, a variance to grant illegal use and occupancy of the premises at forty-four dash forty-six Winter Street to permit a liquor store in that space. It's currently zoned for retail and residential use, but liquor stores are not included among the permitted uses. The applicant, through its co-counsel, Andrew Upton, obtained the approval of the Boston Licensing Commission for the issuance of a liquor store for this location. And that, that was back in May with the support both of the, of the Downtown Business Development Association as well as the Downtown Residents Association. If I could share my screen, I could show you both the letter from the Downtown Business Association indicating their support.
We don't, we don't share a screen, but I think Mr. Newman will speak to that from ONS in a minute.
Okay, thank you. Resident, the, um, the Residential, uh, the Residents Association also supported it as back in connection with the licensing, um, the liquor license before the Licensing Board. The property in question is a twenty-eight-hundred-square-foot first-floor retail space with about twenty-five-hundred square feet in the basement for storage. It's a fourteen, it would be a fourteen-aisle store, each aisle measuring about fifteen feet, selling wine, beer, and liquor. We submit to this board that the circumstances and conditions weigh in favor of, uh, of the variance to allow the liquor store. The neighborhood has a mix of retail and service businesses as well as residents up at the, up above the first-floor spaces. But it's in need of additional businesses and an expansion of the variety of business. As I said, both the Neighborhood Business District and the Residents Committee both considered the applicant's request to locate the liquor store at the location in connection with the liquor license issuance by the Boston Licensing Board. And after discussion and agreement with the applicant as to certain conditions and limitations, submitted their support for the, um, the Licensing Board's grant. Those conditions were, as noted in the letter of May twenty-third of this year, from the Downtown Business Improvement Association to Chairwoman Joyce of the Licensing Board. And with the, the association and the applicant agreed that there would be no kegs sold there. There would be no so-called nip bottles, no alcohol-based window displays. The applicant's principal, Nalish Patel, who's also on with us, proposes to operate a high-end, attractive smoke shop and has operated in the, for the past five years or so at forty-four Washington Street around the corner. I'm sorry, he's looking to operate a liquor store, but he has operated for the past five years a smoke shop at which security is rigorous with thorough review of IDs, all the while maintaining a robust and attractive retail sales operation. That, um, that factor weighed in heavily with the Downtown Business District's support. They know Mr. Patel and they appreciate what he does. There's no other relief that other beyond a variance that would permit the operation and opening of a liquor store at this location under the, under the city zoning code. There's a variety of retail and service businesses serving primarily local residents and daytime occupants of area offices and other businesses. The establishment of a liquor store at this location, operated by a retailer not only experienced in maintaining a safe and secure age-restricted business, but also a businessman with experience in the downtown processing environment and with an investment in maintaining and improving the business climate in the neighborhood, will both serve both local residents and businesses as, again, the associations protested.
Okay, may I pause you there and see if the board has questions?
Sure.
Any questions from the board?
No questions.
Okay, so I'm gonna take public testimony now?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information on the community process. ONS had the applicant send out flyers to Butters within three hundred feet. The applicant then went on to meet with the Downtown Boston Neighborhood Association and get their support. And also, they received a support letter from the Downtown Business Improvement District. With that, we'll defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a raised hand here. One second. Okay. Nalish? Looking to give testimony here, I sent a request to unmute you.
No, I'm the owner of the business that we're talking about.
All right, we have no additional raised hands. Thank you. Okay, with that, may I have a motion? Any motion? Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia? You're muted, Mr. Valencia.
Oh, yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Bedabrazza?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Does the board require a draft of an order or does the board?
Can you discuss that with staff later?
Thank you. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Next, we move on to case BOA one-five-two-five-two-zero-two, with the address of five-seventeen Columbus Avenue. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Yeah, we have a raised hand here. Hi, Pat?
Yes.
Hi, go ahead.
Yep. So we come today for a change of name of proviso for the business that used to be Cafe Madeleine to Colette Bakery.
Is there any additional work being done on the premises?
No.
Okay. Questions from the board? Hearing none, can I have public testimony?
Hi, yes. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Kim Fisher from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office would like to defer to the board on this matter. The committee is excited to see this go in this space and they support the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no, no additional raised hands, thanks. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Bedabrazza?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Next, we have case BOA one-four-nine-four-five-zero-nine, with the address of twelve Caulfield Street. Is the applicant and/or their representative present to explain to the board? Any hands ready?
Yep, we do. Jared, one second. I sent a request to unmute you, Jared. Jared, can you hear us? Are you here for this proposal? He's not responding to the request to unmute himself, so. Okay, he just became a panelist. So Jared, if you can unmute yourself once you become a panelist, we can get you going here.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Jared Scarpaci. I represent Johann Stevenson, the petitioner from the Law Office of Jared Scarpaci. I'm here to present the board for twelve Caulfield Street for a variance and a conditional use permit and other relief here.
Okay, please proceed.
Yes, good afternoon. Thank you for taking me here this afternoon. So my client, the owner of the property, Johann Stevenson, is looking for a proposal. As you can see, in the, the best dimension would be that first paragraph. So he's looking to have all of the decking on the current property which he bought. And he's also done quite extensive remodeling on the property. So now he would like to add those three deckings, as you can see in the stairs, that are on the right side of the decking. He's asking the board for the variances needed for the extra deckings there.
Are there questions from the board? Hearing none, I'm gonna take public testimony. If you're in none, I'm going to take public testimony.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ashley Gomes again from the Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office pulled a meeting for 12 Coffield Street back in July. One of our butter independents. No concerns in regards to that meeting and no active civilian in the area. With that, we defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley.
Any other raised hands?
No, no additional raised hands.
May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, can you read BPDA's recommendation for the record?
I can, because I think Jeff Hampton is not able to get on the meeting. The BPDA recommends no without prejudice and that new plans be submitted where the rear access is moved away from the side yard and where the roof deck is eliminated from the addition.
I wonder if the roof deck that they're referring to is just a top-floor roof deck? Because all of them are decks, so probably they are seeing that the project is excessive in the amount of decks.
Unfortunately, he's not here to speak.
To interpret that, okay. Thank you. I don't have further questions. With that, no, I'd like to put forward motion no without prejudice.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Here, Chair, would you be able to send me the comments from that gentleman that you just read off?
Javier, where are the VPDA recs available?
They should be available in the file, but the representative could contact me. I can forward it along at that point.
Okay, please contact the staff at ZBDA. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next case has been deferred. And following that, we have case BOA 1528246. With the address of 43 to 45 Wood Avenue. Is the applicant's and/or their representative present?
You have a raised hand here, Lawrence.
Yes. Hi, members of the board.
Are you the applicant?
Yes. Well, my wife is. My wife and I. She's trying to get on now.
No worries. Do you want to proceed?
Is she on now?
I don't know.
Ayesha?
Is she under Ayesha?
Yes. She's actually going to do the presentation.
Okay.
Hold on. I don't see the name. Is she under a different name?
Ayesha Yassine?
No. I don't see that name, but if you want to get us started or don't, she can raise her hand if you're on the call, if you want to make.
First armor?
Yes, that's her.
Okay. She's trying to get in.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, sorry, but then I didn't change the name.
Oh, no worries. Please identify yourself and proceed.
Sure, Ayesha Yassine Celester. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm building a house on an empty lot and it consists of two units. I'm requesting an additional driveway and it has been approved by Public Works, Transportation, and the Public Improvement Commission. I thought it would be wise to check with the Building Department since it is new construction that was approved by BOA. The Building Department stated that I have to return to the board. I'm requesting your assistance and approval to proceed.
So you noted that you already have an existing driveway, so what's the reason for the second driveway?
We need additional spaces. It's actually going to be two units. So one side will have space for two parking spaces and the other side will have space for two parking spaces.
Is there a is there a page that shows the parking? That you can steer us to?
This one?
This one, okay.
The one that's shown right here.
So are these tandem spaces?
Yes.
Okay, are there questions from the board?
Just to let the applicant know, we don't really see this type of condition where a resident requests two curb cuts on one lot. This is the first time I see something like that.
So there's actually two condos. There's a condo on the left and a condo on the right. If you look next door, each, at 41, there's about six parking spaces here. And if you go to the other side, which is 47, he has about five spaces. And across the street, over here, they have about maybe 10 spaces. And right over here, the next one across the street, they have about maybe six or seven spaces.
Right, but what I'm seeing in the site plan right now is the one that says number 41, there's only one curb cut regardless of how many parking spaces there are. And on your property, your request, there's going to be potentially two that, you know, you're requesting for one additional. Just an observation.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't have any further comments.
I would also like to add that, and I'm not sure if the board is aware of the dangerousness of Wood Ave, but there have been at least 18 crashes over the past few years. The most recent one being a four-year-old boy who was hit and run and killed. So I know that while building the property, you know, just to even get out of your car, it's people really speed on that street. There was also motorcycle accidents. So there are just a number of concerns and circumstances that this particular request would create a safety barrier for.
Thank you. Other questions from the board?
Yes, were you the ones who originally started this in 2019 and are building the homes?
Yes.
Okay, so can you, I guess, walk through why your request has changed over that time? As Ms. Bede Brazza indicated, you know, there's usually a single curb cut with some parking for a home and even for a two-family, and so that's unusual to see such a change like this while it's in construction. So just walk us through that, please?
Well, that changed because it became, it's two condos. Most people want their own property. It'd be very difficult for two owners to have different, to have tandem parking.
So what was the intention in 20, what was the intention in 2019 then?
Just wasn't thought out, right?
I think the other thing, what I've just mentioned, is really around the safety concern. I think that we thought we would be fine with that one driveway, but it's apparent that, I mean, it's, people, like I said, have been killed just based on people driving way too fast. I know that they've talked about potentially, the mayor has actually talked about potentially adding speed bumps and other things that could potentially slow the traffic down. But literally where our property is located, it's a bend where people, for some reason, tend to just accelerate. The reason that I understand that speed bumps and other, you know, things that would slow traffic down have not been added at this time is because it's considered a through fair or a throughway, I should say, especially for emergency vehicles. So, you know, it's really just a safety measure.
Yes, the motorcyclist got killed right here on the corner. And the child got, the child got killed right around the corner. So right here, if you look right here, the motorcyclist got killed right here. And around the corner here, like right over this way, the child got killed getting into the car.
Thank you, sir. May I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the Judgmental Board. We had the applicant circulate a flyer to a butters within 300 feet. We did not receive any letters in support or in opposition. With that, we'll defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Hi, Bob, are you looking to give testimony here? Okay.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Bob D'Amico, Madam Chair, and members of the board, Bob D'Amico, BTD. As far as the speeding goes, that's a police issue. That's not something that the board can address or BTD. And secondly, Public Works would never put in speed bumps because during the winter season, when you plow, it would present a lot of problems. And like Ms. Brazza said, I have never seen two parking sp, two curb cuts for one lot. And based on that, those three issues, I'd like to go in opposition to this plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Carla?
Hi, I would also like to oppose. More so, there is very limited street parking.
Identify yourself and your address, please. Thank you.
Carla Elwood, 37, Wood Ave.
Thank you, ma'am.
I, yes, there's already limited parking space, but more importantly, before, an exception should be made, or a potential exception. I think they should, the current construction that they're doing on that property on 41 is causing issue to mine. They just, fence was damaged during asphalt being laid. I tried to contact them via text with no response. There's a crumbling retaining wall, so that has, potentially hazardous tree. And they've been non-responsive to me to work directly. So, you know, before new things are added to the properties, they should deal with the problems that you have. Personally.
And
Any other raised hands?
Actually, that property has nothing to do with the other property. What she's, what she's talking about is 41 Wood Ave, and that has nothing to do with 43 and 45. And what the true, the true thing is, this lady wants a tree removed. That's a, that's a probably 200, 300-year-old tree that she wants removed just because she wants solar panels put on her house. So she, so she, this is retaliation.
Thank you, thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Just for the record, we heard Boston Transportation Department put forward their recommendation by Bob that posted. Can you also please read for the record Boston planning, BTD, BPDA's recommendations as well?
That's Brazza is trying to tax my ill state. It's okay. Denial. That's it. With that, can I have a motion?
With, with our recommendations to the board, with those recommendations aboard, I would like to put forward a motion of denial as well.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Ma'am, may I say one more thing before you deny?
Sorry, we're in the process of.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Where am I? Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Ma'am, the Transportation Department already approved it. I don't understand why they're denying it now.
I don't know, but a motion has been made and passed, so you may want to take that back up with them. Thank you. All right, thank you all. Happy Thanksgiving, I think. Will I see you?
Thank you.
All right, happy Thanksgiving.
Thanks.